The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the joint board meeting Tuesday, January 10th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask that the members please introduce themselves, starting at my far right.
Mike LaMoth, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Mike Frini, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony Damato, City Council.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Derek Chenchuski, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Jake Garryer, Board of Finance.
Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
I'm Mayor Ken Cackeen. Item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on December 13th, 2016.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
It's the consent calendar, and there are five items. Two As to transfer $7,000 within the Register of Voters operating budget for overtime, postage, and office supplies. Two Bs to transfer $90,000 within the Corporation Council's operating budget for professional fees revaluation. Two Cs to make an additional appropriation of $18,667 within the library operating budget funded by Man Russ Trust revenue. Two Ds to make an additional appropriation of $59,133 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by telecommunications reimbursements. And five E's to make an additional appropriation of $810,000 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by the School Readiness Early Childhood Grant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To transfer $6,500 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for bathroom modifications at the senior center.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Piece of discussion there. Just have a question, whether this includes any ADA accommodations, Americans with disabilities? I'm just concerned at the senior center that that might be needed, and if we are doing a modification, if it isn't being included, perhaps it should be. I don't know who can speak. Okay, thanks.
Another discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
To transfer $68,173 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number five.
To adopt in a single motion the resolutions presented making appropriations and authorizing borrowings for the following capital projects: synthetic athletic fields at Bristol Central High School and Bristol Eastern High School; alternative fill for the synthetic athletic fields at Bristol Central High School and Bristol Eastern High School; relocation of bleachers to Bristol Central High School; and compliance improvements; Curtis Avenue, Zip Avenue, and Twining Street reconstruction; railroad bridge rehabilitation; Sharon, Dover, and Warren Streets reconstruction; Lexington Street reconstruction; street light upgrade; streetscape improvements; North Main Street City Hall; heating and hot water boilers and electrical panel replacement at DMAC; acquisition of a fire engine; Chippens Hill Middle School roof replacement and parapet walls; and replacement of the tennis courts at Bristol Central High School and Bristol Eastern High School. To waive the reading of the resolutions and incorporate the full texts as presented at this meeting into and made a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number six.
And, Your Honor, if we can have a roll call? It will be bonding.
Roll call, starting at my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item six.
To transfer $18,500 from the general fund contingency account for the Bristol Veterans Council for a three-month allocation for the Veterans Strong Community Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
Transfer $100,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for legal fees at Green Hill School.
Move.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Can we just get a quick explanation? Is this for the piping that burst? Yes? Okay. Where are we in that? Can anybody explain where we are?
Our Board of Ed has been negotiating extensively with the contractors. They've had multiple meetings. They've made a lot of progress. Some of the contractors have stepped up and offered to repair some of the work at no cost. Others' items are still in dispute. We're probably a few months out from resolution.
Has anything been done? Is the ceiling tile, are the ceiling tiles still missing? Are they back in place? What's going on there? Do you know?
I don't know.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number eight.
Monthly Revenue and Expanse Report Presentation.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor. Happy New Year for everyone. Usually I don't have too much to discuss, but tonight I've got a few items to bring to your attention, so I think they're kind of important. Excuse me. Number one, we've put in your mailboxes, the audit is complete. This is what's called the CAFER, so you may be interested to look at that. I would call your attention to page four, what's called the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis. I prepare that in conjunction with Robin. It gives you a nice background about, from six, seven pages, that tells you what's taken place financially this past year for the city. And by the way, the city has a, for its fourth, I believe, possibly fifth year, I didn't look back that far, a surplus in the general fund, putting us in a good position when we go to the rating agencies in April. We're at 15 percent. We hit our target, and things are looking good as far as the finances are concerned for the city of Bristol. The surplus was $4.4 million, and just give you a highlight, a couple of things that contributed to that. Excellent, as usual, tax collections by our tax collector and tax office, very aggressive, along with Ed Koike's office for looking for back taxes, very good. We had higher than normal, had an anomaly, but a good anomaly, in building permits for pods and for a couple of the other, that company that is under construction. So the building permits were $400,000 higher than what we had budgeted. And then you may recall, there was the payout of the fund balance retained earnings for Bristol Resource Recovery. We received several checks through the mayor's office, and it was about $1.1 million. So, of course, those things won't happen next year, but nevertheless, it supported our fund balance, and we also put aside some of the excess for reserves for heart and hypertension and for sinking fund for purchases of next year that will make this budget a little bit easier. Excuse me. One of the changes that has taken place, that last month, we thought, we were told, notified, the mid-year cuts by Governor Malloy's office for $250,000 for Alliance District, and we were under the impression at that point in time that it was a reduction of the ECS grant. And we found out through CCM yesterday, they confirmed with the Office of Policy and Management that that $250,000 reduction is applied completely to the Alliance grant. And the Alliance grant is given directly to the Board of Education. I know that Chris is here, so he probably has heard about that, but I did forward that to the Board of Ed, and we'll discuss that. That's been salaried out among different teachers and things, so as interim business manager for them, and we'll have a discussion on that to make the appropriate changes. But we thought it was going to affect us on our side and the city's side, and CCM has told us that, no, it's on the Board of Education's side. No matter what side it is, it's always an unfortunate circumstance to have mid-year reductions. And today, we had a note sale on our only taxable note, when we purchased the property, the mall property, for originally $7.1 million, seven years ago. And we have taken down that note eight times with surpluses that we put aside, with premiums on past issuances. So we started at $7.1 million. We never budgeted for the paydown. We used the premiums and surpluses. And today, we sold the note for $4 million. It was $4.5 million. We paid down $500,000. It goes to show you what happens in the economy when we, a year ago or so, or six months or so ago, when we rolled the note over from five to four and a half, the interest rate a year ago was 1.19. That's when we were at record lows with the mortgage rates. And since you probably know, the feds have increased the rates ever since, and the market has adjusted for that. But nevertheless, our rate came in today at 1.73. So that's still very good money market, money rate. It went up 54 basis points. Still under 2 percent, pretty cheap. The other thing that happened with the reductions for Governor Malloy that I just want to make you aware of is that the governor's office froze the local capital improvement grant. And we normally get around $600,000, I believe, 600, not in agreement. He didn't reduce it, and then basically just said that they're freezing it. In other words, it's tied to what the state of Connecticut bonds, and they bond for the low SIP grant. So they, until and if the state goes out and borrows more money, which they're probably a little bit reluctant to do, the low SIP grant won't exist in the upcoming budget. Fortunately for us, in our office, along with other offices, we turned around, and as soon as we had the low SIP grant for the current year, we turned around, applied, and fully, it gets tied to the 10-year plan. We applied for all the projects that we tied it to, and we did that in the fall. They froze the projects as of January 1st, so we got under the, beautiful, I mean, anyone who procrastinated, any community that procrastinated is going to lose any of the things that they appropriated that they didn't apply. You've got to apply for the, to the state of Connecticut, they come back and say yes or no, or modify it, that type of thing. So we're in a good position. However, going into the '17, '18 year, looking at the 10-year capital improvement program, we've got an issue. There's three ways that we pay for capital projects. Debt service, which I'm going to recommend, we don't add anything in debt service, we're $62 million authorized but unissued, and we're going to go out in the spring. I'll talk about that shortly. So you've got debt service, you have grants, mainly low SIP. So that's been frozen. And then we usually put a cash infusion for the third way of about $560,000 we have for that. We'll continue for this year, but the upcoming year is going to be difficult if that remains frozen, so we won't be issuing any additional debt service. I'll be recommending that to the Board of Finance, and we're going to lose that grant. Excuse me, the call continues. But the other change I'll be recommending that you should know to the Board of Finance for discussion purposes is that cash portion in the general fund that we send over to the Capital Projects Fund. Since we need to keep our capital projects at a minimum, I'm going to recommend that we transfer that money and use it for our actuarial determined contribution to our pension plan. The police and fire plans are doing very, very well. There's no required contribution, but there is a required contribution for the city's side and the Board of Ed Cafeteria Fund, and it's spread among other funds that we have on our side. So it's probably, and we've also decreased our interest rate. The Pension Board did that. So when you decrease the expected interest rate, then the contribution has to go up higher. We don't have the number yet. We expect it very shortly from our actuary, and hopefully that the $500,000 will more than cover it for whatever that is. Of course, the Board of Ed will take a portion of that, too. So we're going to recommend full funding, because we're going to be going into a, as a matter of fact, I met with our financial advisor today, since we had the note sale for the $4 million, and we did a couple of things. We, first of all, met and talked about the issuance for the spring, which, since we have about $62 million, I wish we had $1,000, authorized and unissued, we're going to probably split it, and then we'll size and structure that for its, the maximum is 20 years. I usually go less than that for something to gain, what they call bond years. So somewhere between 17 and 19 years, we'll be going out in the spring. And we're going to have a full presentation of, for Moody's and S&amp;P. You know we have the AAA from Fitch, which is the third one, so our plan, you should know this, is that we will first entertain Fitch, but we'll do a conference call. And that will be kind of for the mayor and I, and the board chair, and Justin will be involved. We will, that'll be the warm-up, since we already have the AAA. I mean, we're not going to fall on our faces with the presentation, we'll just maintain it. So that'll be a warm-up, we can tweak it, and then what we're going to do is have S&amp;P and Moody's, and we're striving for it. May not happen, but we're striving to do them all in one day. So we're thinking of S&amp;P coming up first. We'll do the bus tour around the city, show the highlights, and maybe some warts and blemishes. And then we'll end up our day at ESPN with a tour, and then hit the board room for their questions. That'll be in the morning, have lunch, and then in the meantime, Moody's will be probably at the Doubletree, and we'll say goodbye to S&amp;P, and then we'll pick up Moody's, and we'll do it all over again. So, and the whole point we're striving for, I spoke with our financial advisor, Matt Spurndell, I had lunch with him today, is to notify them that we're looking for the AAA. Middletown received the AAA back in, before we did in October, in the summer. I've asked the financial advisor to give us their market report, to see how we can mimic it, to see where we're better and where we're weak, and we've got a lot of time to work on the weaknesses. I don't think we, I don't think we have too many weaknesses. So I'll find out what their market report, what they said about them, and I also want to see a copy of their presentation. Our financial advisor is their financial advisor, and there's no misdeed in doing something along that lines. People do it all the time, but, and we can probably even advance what we're doing. What we have to prepare, while we're doing the budget, which is a lot of work for the staff in my office for this, is called an official statement. This is the official statement, goes out, must go out when you have a debt issuance. So we have to update this 100-page document while, and we're going to be doing it in the month of March, while we're having the hearings and for the budget process and preparing the budget report. So it's going to be quite a busy time for my office. I'll be working a lot with Justin's office, because economic development will be very important to highlight the gains that have been made this year. So it's really an overview of, we've got a lot on our plate, but we'll tackle it and continue on. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other business? None. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Council meeting will be in five minutes.
Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting Tuesday, January 10th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the council to please introduce themselves, starting at my far right. Calvin Brown, District 1.
Anthony Damato, District 1.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, District 2.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cackeen. Ask for a moment of silence for troops on active duty. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on December 13th, 2016, and the special joint city council workshop on December 5th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Public participation. Jeff Cagiano. Name an address for the record, please.
Jeff Cagiano, 27 Cricket Hill Road. Hello. First, I want to thank all of you. This fall, I watched my youngest son and his high school career at Bristol Eastern playing on the newly renovated fields. This weekend, I was also approached by the largest and fastest-growing premier soccer league in the state, and was given a proposal that we're going to forward along to start renting some of those fields and having the community get involved in those fields. That was a vision that many had a significant time ago. As a matter of fact, that drew me into a little bit of the political foray almost 10 years ago. Unfortunately, it took about 15 years of partisan debate to get this to happen, and I'm pleased that it happened. I think that the city will get great enjoyment out of this, and it's nice to see already that the local citizens and the entire community is going to be involved. You know, for some reason, the city of all heart is often the city that doesn't believe. I believe that we're on the precipice of some major decisions, that this will determine our long-term future. Center Square is slated to break ground this year, and we need to build on the success of the Bristol Hospital plans. You guys will all be judged on how that happens. Businesses are filling the southeast Business Park. We have pods and GMN. Major construction projects are ongoing. There are others relocating to downtown. We have Biker's Edge. I saw that Faneuil Incorporated is bringing 100 jobs downtown. I don't know how they're doing with their hiring, but they are bringing them downtown. These are positive trends. We need to continue these. I realize that it's going to be difficult to determine what we do with City Hall. That's another big decision that's been debated on. If it makes sense to put it in the Boulevard, that's fine, and I know that's a very strong emotional issue in this town, so that's going to be difficult for all of you. You know, when we look at, hang on one second, lost my place. The state of Connecticut has, right now, some tough fiscal times. We just heard the report that funds are going to be cut, but Bristol has a AAA bond rating. This should allow us to invest wisely in these important projects. And hopefully, we won't see tax increases, maybe minimal at best, and we'll hold you to that, but I think the public is going to critically judge every one of you on the economic status once we get to November. If I can help, I want you to let me know. I think this is something we need to do to start working together. I encourage anyone that wants to support to get involved. There is some, you know, glory at the end, because I got to witness my son play. Unfortunately, the two older ones did not get to play on those fields, so it took a little too long. So I'm hopeful that the only blues that we're going to see this year are on the newly renovated Muddy Field hitting home runs. And I want to thank you for listening. I want to make sure that you all know that I'm happy with what's going on, and I believe in Bristol, and I hope the rest of the audience does as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Terry Parker.
Terry Parker, 424 Lake Avenue in Bristol, Connecticut. In 1980, I went to a rally for Ted Kennedy, who ran for president. And he got up and he said, "I belong to the greatest labor union in the world. If I have a problem, I can gripe, I can go in the Senate and speak, and I want to raise my salary, I can just go and book myself one." That was a tongue-in-cheat comment, but I've been reminded that maybe not so tongue-in-cheat. Councilwoman Gagnon, I sat right there, six years this summer, and voted for a paid race for just the mayor at the time, and the Board of Assessment Appeals. I didn't realize the political football that was going to be caused. And after that election, I started thinking, that got to be a better way, not just because I lost the election. I thought elected official compensation in the hands of the city council didn't make sense. I have, on one occasion, asked a charter vision, and to their defense, I didn't have a lot of time, but I think the issue of elected official compensation should be in the hands of the Board of Finance, be part of the budget process. And when it is that way, elected officials are in the minority when those issues are voted on. Now, we passed the mayor's salary increase six years ago after we had actually voted on a budget. Somehow, that doesn't make a lot of sense, and there's no reason why they cannot handle and be prepared to know what their budget is going to be. And in the, the optus, a lot better, and I think it's a better process for the taxpayers and the public at large. And I know, as a former councilman, it is less, it's hard to put yourself in a position that you might be raised a salary to future council, because the people never think it's a nest council, no matter how many times we tell them. But it's a tough position where you put elected officials in, and not a place where it belongs. It should be part of the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Rust.
Is somebody going to be reading the addendum that, for the Working Cities Challenge grant tonight?
When we get to it, yes.
Somebody going to read that when we get to it? The Connecticut Design Grant that we're applying for.
It'll be, which one is it?
The addendum.
The addendum, I'm sorry, addendum.
Which one?
Addendum item 14.
Well, I guess I'll just read it. Says, "Proposals are being solicited for economic growth initiatives to impact the lives of lower-income residents and residents of color, and proposal must demonstrate the two-phase process will integrate the core elements of collaborative leadership, community engagement, evidence-based decision-making, and systems change." The initial concept proposal involves enrollment in vocational training, apprenticeship programs, reducing barriers for higher-paying unemployment, and access to transportation. And I believe this Working Cities Challenge grant is associated with the transportation aspect of our redevelopment in the downtown. You know, it's funny, I look up TOD on the internet, and it says that it has to do with housing, office, and retail integrated in a walkable neighborhood within a half-mile of transit. I've come to city meetings and mentioned more than one time that best practices for community engagement for transit-oriented development projects would involve educating the public on what transit-oriented development is, but a recent survey put together by some anonymous residents in the city returned to results that about half of the residents in the city don't even know what transit-oriented development is. So how can you get good feedback? And that's what Reconnecting America says, if you want to have meaningful feedback, then you have to educate the public on the trade-offs for TOD. You know, the trade-offs, like what we find in the Route 6 corridor study, the part that nobody's talking about, the residential aspect in the bus stops that are going to be put over in the Farmington end of Route 6, over near Stevens World of Wheels, and the Methadone Clinic, and over by New Cambridge Apartments, and we're going to be increasing the density. And there's two proposals from the planning commission, well, the planning commission's study, or, I'm not sure, they didn't call it proposals, they called it, "We're floating an idea when a concerned resident asked, is there going to be a chance that there's going to be no public hearing for someone to build a six-family unit next to my house?" And she was reassured, "No." Well, if you look at the Route 6 corridor study, it really is, it's suggesting that we put an overlay zone across Route 6 that would allow, by right development, up to six-family unit homes where there's only single-family homes. How would you feel if you owned a single-family home and you found out one morning, "They're knocking down the house next to me, and they're going to build a six-family unit, and I don't get to have a public hearing," because I was told there was no public hearing. The public hearing was part of the Route 6 corridor study, and I didn't even know that that was going to affect me that way, because I don't understand that this is even transit-oriented development. We're so far off of best practices, it's not even funny. And, you know, I'm finding things online, it's really disturbing, even members of boards and commissions are saying things like, "Well, if you want to be better informed, you need to come to the meetings and go on the city website and find it." But guess what? You can't find all the meetings on the city website still. And I know we're working on it, but, you know what? How long are we going to work on it for?
Sean, we just had training last week, Thursday, for that, so by this month, we should have them all up online.
Can I just ask one more question and get this off my plate? Project referendum initiative, is, was this a proper question? If I were to say, on the ballot proposal, it would say, "Shall the city of Bristol adopt a resolution including project referendum to the city charter?" And then I would attach the project referendum, which I brought to the city numerous times. Would that be an acceptable question to Would that be an acceptable question to introduce ballot initiative for a referendum? We talked about this a few months ago, but I never got an answer back.
So you want to put it on the ballot?
If I wanted to put it on the ballot by, by initiative, if I got 3,000 signatures and, and my petition said, "Shall the city of Bristol adopt project referendum," and the language that I submitted to the city attorney, and I, I think more than once, would that be, um, would that be permissible? Would that be proper, I should say? Proper is a funny word, because I can't, I can't get the definition of that from the Planning Commission either. I don't know if I can get an answer for that. Well, here's the paper I told you I'd give you last month, Court Principles for Public Engagement. I gave that to the Planning Commission, too, because I'd like to speak about the Route Six Quarter Study, which is an addendum to the Plan of Conservation Involvement, but I can't, because, I don't know, they, the, the chairman said they sent a letter to the Corporation Council, whether or not I can address something.
I believe they're working on a, um, a finding.
Okay, so, so I don't, I can't have an answer for anything tonight, or is there, is there any? Project referendum, ballot initiative? We don't know? Okay, thank you.
Announcement starting my far left.
Okay, just let me get my papers together here. Well, Happy New Year to everyone. In addition to the new year, yesterday, um, council member Demato celebrated his birthday, and so I do want to wish him a happy birthday. And while we all celebrate birthdays, this is a particularly important milestone, because with Tony turning thirty, it means that the council people here each represent a different decade. We have a council person in his twenties, we have a council person in his thirties, we have a councilwoman in her forties, we have a councilwoman in her fifties, we have a councilman in his sixties, and we have a councilman in his seventies. So despite what anybody thinks, we are a diverse body that is representing Bristol, at least age-wise. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And I also wanted to, um, reiterate something, uh, I saw somewhere, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you where, but the Disability Commission is trying to get the word out there for people to keep their sidewalks shoveled and ice-free. While many of us do shovel, sometimes we don't really do it adequately, we don't deal with the little mounds that end up at the end of our sidewalk or near the road, and we do have folks that, that use wheelchairs and electric vehicles and, um, canes, and really do need clean sidewalks to get around safely, so the Disability Commission is trying to make folks understand what that means to people that are disabled. And also, blood donations are in crisis mode these days. The American Red Cross is asking for donations. They are severely low across the country, and when we have bad weather and a drive gets canceled, it affects the whole region for a period of time, so I, I say that often, but we are in a crisis mode at this point. And lastly, um, my Democratic council colleagues, Calvin Brown, Dave Proleski, and myself, are going to hold an office hours. We've done this a couple of times in the past. We're planning one for February fourth at the Bristol Library from 10:00 a.m. to noon. That's just free for anyone to come talk about anything they might like that is relative to city business, and again, February fourth at the Bristol Library from 10:00 to noon, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of plugs. Uh, one, Happy New Year to everyone. Um, we survived the holidays, we're back to business, I guess, right? Um, the West End Association is a, um, a very good, um, association that's trying to work to develop both the business and neighborhoods in the West End. They've got a great fundraiser going on. I plugged this last month. It's called The Taste of Bristol. The tickets are $5. There are 30 participating restaurants for which you can get 20% discount on your food bill. Tickets are available in the, in the mayor's office, Hamilton &amp; Sons, South Side Meat Market, the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, Parkside Cafe, and 457 Mason Jar North Main Street. Uh, $5 are the tickets, and you can visit restaurants during the months of March and April to get the discounts. It's great. It's a great money raiser for the West End Associate, Association, but it also helps our local, our local merchants. And the second thing is, um, the Bristol Senior Center is, is a very aggressive and busy agenda going on right now. They're accepting applications for registrations for their new winter classes, for fitness, arts, and computers. The AARP is having a free tax preparation program again on Tuesdays and Fridays, beginning on February seventh, from 8:30 till 12:30, on a first-come, first-served basis. They do a great job. And, um, another great service, from time to time, we get questions from, from residents about Social Security. At the Senior Center on Wednesdays from nine to 12, they have a Skype program, which I think is really a good program, where, uh, local residents can get questions answered from the Hartford Social Security Office. Um, any questions, uh, you can go to the city website, the Senior Center has a page, Call Patty. Uh, they do a great job, and, um, it's a very, very active community over there. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. My turn? It's nice to be part of a diverse body. I don't know what part I am, but, uh, anyway.
The top.
The top of the totem pole.
Okay, I'm the top of the totem pole. Okay, okay, that's good. All right, uh, the one announcement I have, uh, is, is something that I'm really pleased to make, and I'm actually going to have Justin Malley make the announcement, but, uh, as you know, the marketing committee's been in effect for a few years now, and, uh, last September, we lost, uh, we, we decided through a realignment of things that the marketing director would be coming into the city, and a hire was made, uh, about two weeks ago, and a gentleman has started, and I'd like to ask, uh, Justin Malley if he could introduce our new marketing manager. Uh, I know that's not a new title, but you can present it with a title and introduce him a few more.
You know what? I'm going to just take a second. I want to introduce two new people, because we hired two folks, and we're so happy to do that. Thank you to the council and to the Board of Finance, our residents, for supporting these new positions in the BDA, and really the whole BDA staff. Um, we hired Annie Chaghatz-Bonian. She's our new Economic Development Specialist. She couldn't make it tonight, but Annie's going to be taking care of, uh, Annie's going to be taking care of all things economic development, things like Start of Bristol and, and new things, right? I mean, the idea of hiring Annie and Mark is, we're not in the BDA, we want to go after what's next, not look at what we've done and, um, never stop improving, and we need folks to bring ideas and their resources. So Annie's going to be doing economic development, Mark is going to be doing, taking the wonderful marketing platform that we've created, right, that you've created, and, and others, and taking it to the next level, and what does that mean? Community engagement, keeping that going, because, you know, uh, that's just done really well in the last few years. The All Heart site's going to get bigger and better, um, and then we're going to focus marketing, too, on like business development and some other things that I am concerned with, so we're going to try to hit it, hit it on all cylinders. Mark, do you want to just say hi real quick?
Good.
That'll teach you to come to a council meeting.
Mayor, council members, um, I'm kind of long in the tooth, and I appreciate your comments, Dave.
Not as long as I am.
Okay, I'll try to catch you. Um, I haven't been excited about a job, uh, in a long time. It's a great challenge, and over the last two weeks, um, it's been really refreshing in the fact that I've had to go into a lot of major corporations to where there's problems. It may, when you get into the forest, all of a sudden, the trees look a little bit bigger. I'm really excited about our assets. I think the city is an unknown jewel in Connecticut. We've got a lot of wins. We've got so many more things that a lot of communities do not have, so that's the tools, uh, that I'm excited about, but I, I think actually the program's in good shape. I think my job, easily said, probably a little tougher to do, is to go from good to great, and I can't wait to work with all of you, and, um, I, I'm pretty jazzed. So thank you for the confidence, and you'll get everything I've got.
Let me, let me, let me add a couple of things to that, because, you know. You know, I've, I've been in, uh, the last couple of weeks, I've been in quite a bit of meetings with both Mark and Annie, and, um, they bring energy to the city. Uh, we already have the energy, but they bring fresh ideas. Uh, Mark has brought multiple ideas. We, we, I think this is great. This shows our commitment to the city as far as marketing, Dave. This is something that we talked about as councilmen, uh, four years ago.
Right.
And, uh, under Mayor Ward, uh, we started it. We started a, uh, trial period with the chamber, and now we brought it in-house, and this is going to allow us to really explode. Um, Mark's already gotten comfortable with it. He doesn't know, as I was walking in behind him this morning, he's already bringing pictures into City Hall. So, uh, he's decorating his office, so it's great to have you and Annie here, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, Mayor, for the, for the record, his name is Mark Thomas. I don't think that came out. Mark Thomas, welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Uh, a few. The annual OM show is now holding auditions. The theme this year is called There's No Place Like Home. It is going to incorporate a lot more children into the theme of the show. The auditions were supposed to be tonight, but they canceled them due to, uh, apparently inclement weather, and that the Board of Education canceled the activity, so they canceled the auditions. So it's going to be next Tuesday, the 17th, from 6:00 to 9:00, at the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. Also, the NAACP will host a breakfast in honor of Martin Luther King on Monday, the 16th, which is Martin Luther King Day, at Bristol Eastern High School at 8:00 a.m. And the Bristol Boys and Girls Club is having a mother-son Valentine's Dance on Friday, February 10th, from 6:30 to 9:00. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
Uh, first of all, Happy New Year. Uh, everyone hopefully survived the holidays, and now it's time to get that workout plan in, uh, full shape and ready to go. Uh, the only thing I have is, um, we, we just, uh, we're introduced all tonight to Mark Thomas, a fine gentleman, but I had the pleasure of meeting Annie, um, last week, um, and unfortunately, according to, she can't be here tonight, but she was another great hire, very nice person, very knowledgeable, um, and, uh, look forward to working with her as well. Thanks.
Councilman?
All right. So on Friday, January 20th, a new service group entitled Bristol Does is hosting a Unity in the Community charity event, Happy Hour, at the Tea Salon and Cafe located at 245 Main Street. Guests can enjoy Happy Hour and networking of, in support of causes that have a positive impact on Bristol. The suggested donation is $10, with all proceeds being distributed to the following causes: uh, the Boys and Girls Club at Cambridge Park, For Goodness Sake, Prudence Crandall Center, the Sale Program, and the United Way Fund to benefit the Brian Angel's Homelessness Initiative. So again, that's, uh, Friday, January 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Tea Salon and Cafe on Main Street. It's called Unity in the Community. Everybody's welcome, and we hope to see you there. And that's it for me.
And I have none.
Your Honor, I have one that I forgot, and I saw my friend, um, Ron Nelson here, and so I assumed that he was going to speak, and so I crossed it off on my list, um, but because he, um, apparently did not, I just wanted to remind folks, he spoke to us last month about, um, a child, a 10-year-old boy, uh, from Bristol that is in need of a stem cell and bone marrow transplant, and the fundraiser that he spoke of is this coming Saturday at Nucci's at 5:00, uh, this pasta supper fundraiser, um, so I just wanted to remind folks of that, because it is coming up very soon. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilman. Consent calendar.
There are six items. Five A's to place on file the new hire report for December 2016. Five B's to approve a tax assessment freeze, freeze application for Alexander Simone, owner of 192 Mercier Avenue Bristol for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a single-family structure per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. Five C's to approve a tax assessment freeze application for Haberfeld Enterprises LLC, owner of 106 Judd Street Bristol for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a two-family structure per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. Five D's to authorize Kenneth B. Cocain to sign any and all documents associated with City of Bristol, State of Connecticut, CMAC Project Agreement, DOT 00170189, and refer to Corporation Council for compliance with city code and regulation, regulations. Five E is to authorize Kenneth B. Cocain, or Acting Mayor, to submit a grant application for $15,000 for the Rewards Program grant to fund an educational mailing to Bristol households to promote recycling and to refer to the Board of Finance for information. And five F is the approval for City of Bristol to accept the donation of a standby generator for the animal control facility from the Friends of Bristol Animal Shelter, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion made, second. A discussion.
Your Honor, quickly, I just would like to say under item F, uh, thank you to the Friends of the Bristol Animal Shelter for your thoughtful and kind donation of not only the generator at the animal shelter, but also for the installation costs. I think that, for those of you who are familiar, uh, you'll know what I mean. The, the Friends of the Bristol Animal Shelter are a great example of one of those community assets that Mr. Thomas mentioned earlier, a group of people that are so dedicated and devoted to the cause that they serve, and how that strengthens the community of the city of Bristol. Uh, so I wanted to say thank you to the Friends of the Bristol Animal Shelter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just to piggyback on, on Calvin's, uh, remarks, also, if you are familiar with the building, if you go by and look at the building, the facade has been painted.
That's right.
A beautiful mural on the front of it, and it really looks terrific. They did a wonderful job. That's it. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Are you none, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Committee report starting my far left.
Um, I just have one regarding, uh, BCO's transition to being part of the, uh, Human Resources Agency, uh, the New Britain Organization. I've spoken about this for several months, but I did receive an email from Tom Morrow just yesterday, and I'm just going to read a part of it quoting, "Please be advised that the closing on the BCO properties was held on Friday afternoon." That would have been January 6th. "Now with this having closed, the exchange of signatures on the asset transfer will also take place. Other final winding-up activities will be handled by the three remaining board members of BCO." So officially, HRA is, um, the agency that handles the activities that BCO has been handling for years here in Bristol, so it's sort of the end of an era and the beginning of a new one, and if anyone ever has questions about that or has questions about services, um, they can certainly contact me, and I will, uh, be the conduit to HRA at this point. Thank you.
Councilman, let me just add to that, because that's a good point. Uh, we had a meeting in my office, and Councilwoman Fordyer was in attendance with HRA Director, uh, and his name's, excuse me, right now.
Rocco.
Rocco. Uh, and it was a very good meeting. Uh, he assured us that the services that BCO keeps, currently was in Bristol, are staying in Bristol, uh, and we made it very clear that we would like a working relationship with HRA, uh, as we did with BCO. So it was a very good meeting. I think it lasted a little bit over an hour, maybe. Uh, it was an excellent meeting, so, um, thanks for bringing that up. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Councilman? Nothing tonight, Your Honor? Councilman? Nothing.
Uh, just from the park board, the Winter Youth Registration is open, and if you want to see what's available, you can just go to Bristol, B-R-I-S-T-O-L-R-E-C, bristlerrec.com, and classes will begin the first week of February. Also, January is free Fit Float Demo Class Month. The public is invited to try the new Fit Floats at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center, and classes are Monday through Friday, 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. and 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
None, Your Honor, but is there a way that we can, uh, have the water superintendent just give us a quick report on the drought? Sorry, Rob, I didn't let you know, but if you can give us a two-second update on the status, if you don't mind.
It's not even your committee. You took that away from Calvin.
That's all right. That's all right. Okay.
You beat Councilman to the punch.
It's a joint, that's a joint question. There you go.
I was comfortable for a few more minutes waiting for Calvin to call.
Right, right.
Uh, good evening, council members. Uh, an update on the drought. We are slowly coming up, and I say that with apprehension. I say slowly. We are at 46% as of yesterday in our reservoirs, um, hoping to be about 50%, but we'll see. You know, uh, the inclement weather hasn't shown up like it was supposed to a couple hours ago, so, uh, we're still waiting for that rain to come in tonight. With what we're getting, um, it'll get us over a little bit of a hump, but we are far from being out of this drought. Like every community in the state of Connecticut, um, right now, we're asking everyone to conserve as much as they can. Uh, the mayor and I did some interviews last week with, uh, Channel 30 and, uh, and the Bristol Press, asking for people to watch what they're doing. You know, basically, if you are brushing your teeth, shut it off for a little bit. Uh, maybe switch to paper plates once or twice a week, just to give us, you know, a little, uh, reprieve on it. We don't know what Mother Nature's going to bring to us. We don't know. It's been good so far, but the biggest thing that we get is, you know, it rains, and I'll, my phone rings off the hook next day, is, is the drought over? No, it's not. You know, in the fall, I had somebody wanted to fill a swimming pool. It rained the next day, he called two days later, "Can I fill it?" No, we're not out of that yet. We've got a long way to go. Um, we're doing everything we can as a department. One good thing that we've seen is that the recent precipitation that we've gotten has gotten down into the aquifer. Um, our water supply comes from reservoirs and wells, so we have a, um, our wells are starting to come back, and I think some private wells are starting to come back where people were having problems as well in the city, that we don't supply. as well in the city that we don't supply. With that being said, um, that's gonna give us a little bit more surplus, and we're gonna try some things. We have a pump station on Mountain Road, uh, that was put in purposely to take water from the well side to put into the reservoir side. We've never used it. Um, we're working right now to activate it. We'll be out there again tomorrow, so if we could take a little bit from the wells and put it back in and save some water on our surface water side. We also, January 1st, uh, activated, actually, December 1st, activated the interconnection with New Britain. Uh, we have a permit through that where we could take up to 500,000 gallons a day. Starting January 1st, we started taking 500,000, um, so that's gonna help our supplies as well. So, any questions, or?
I, I do have one through the chair. Um, I'm just wondering if we are, if we have seen a decrease in use. In other words, are people conserving or trying to?
We have. Um, I wanna thank all the residents of Bristol, all the customers of Royal Water Department for it. It's really hard to measure, and that's the hardest part. Everyone says, "Did you see a decrease?" Well, the timing that we had of when we went into restrictions was the end of the seasonal usage. People stopped, you know, watering their grass and things of that nature. We, uh, track it every single day. I have a spreadsheet that tracks it through. We've seen up to 18, 25% reduction. It goes up and down. Thanksgiving, went back up. Next day, went back down. So it all depends on what people are doing and what they're, you know, we wanna, don't wanna inconvenience everybody, but we are in a serious situation right now, so, but we gotta thank them for what they have done.
Let me also thank the Water Board, and Councilman Brown sits on that Water Board. Uh, they stayed on top of this all summer with, with Rob and his staff. Uh, you know, we all had a great summer, but now we're paying for it, and it's catching up. We're getting some of the water back, but, uh, Rob, your staff in the Water, but did it, or did an outstanding job keeping everyone informed. Uh, I think there was a couple weeks, Rob and I spoke almost daily, uh, about what was going on, but, um, you know.
Thank your board as well when you get back. Uh, we appreciate all they've done. I will. They're very intuned.
And, and your, your staff.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final note, uh, Rob, I just ran into Mike Lynch today, and, uh, we were speaking about the most recent water break, uh, excuse me, water main break and those low temperatures, so you guys did a nice job. That's pretty difficult weather to work in, so kudos to the department as well.
Yeah, our crew was out last night on Camp Street fixing a, a break, but, uh, one thing that we've done, uh, we are doing leak detection as much as we can through the system to make sure if there's anything leaking out there, we get to it. If anyone sees a leak, let us know immediately. Every drop that's going back into the ground hurts us. So as soon as we found out about it, we shut it right down, and it was fixed, uh, by the evening time, so hopefully we will not have any more, so.
Good luck with that.
That's not usually the future for me, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Tony?
No.
Yes, a few items. Uh, first, from the Library Board. Um, some local young entrepreneurs and craftspeople got a chance to sell a variety of goods to over 100 shoppers last month at a library craft fair. 16 teen vendors participated. Also, uh, adults can access the library website now through the city website to register for adult programs. And Sunday hours continue through the end of March at the library from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Uh, those are on Sunday afternoons. Also, from the Youth Services Committee, "The Drug-Free Community Coalition is 25 members strong and seeking to build its capacity to prevent youth substance abuse. The Bristol Prevention Coalition is in the process of branding its new name, 'Best for Bristol.' The Coalition is requesting proposals to fund programs or strategies to prevent or reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs in Bristol. Proposals may be submitted by nonprofit or public agencies serving Bristol residents. Local businesses employing Bristol residents who are seeking to implement fundamental policy changes regarding substance abuse may also apply. Applications must be received by Friday, February 3rd, 2017, at 4:30 PM. Funded projects must be completed by June 15th, 2017. A total of $4,082 is available to be awarded. The mini-grant applications with detailed instructions will be available on the City of Bristol Department of Youth Services website, and funding is being made available through the Substance Abuse Action Council." Also, on the subject of homelessness in the community, uh, the National Point-in-Time Count of Homeless Adults is scheduled to be conducted on January 24th between 7:00 and 11:00 PM. Volunteers will meet at 6:00 PM at St. Joseph's Hall. Volunteers interested in working in teams to survey the community should contact Phil Lisiak at St. Vincent de Paul Mission Center, Mission Shelter, excuse me. The Count of Homeless Youth and Young Adults, ages 13 to 24-years-old, will be conducted from January 25th through the 31st. We are seeking to count homeless youth, including those who do not have a permanent residence. Please contact Diana Barubi at St. Vincent de Paul or Eileen McNulty at Youth Services if you would like to participate or be counted, or you know someone that should be counted. In the past year, 40 people who were chronically homeless have received assistance and have been housed, but the continued challenges of homelessness are still prevalent in the city, and it's especially prevalent on our minds during the very cold weather. So that's the update from the Youth Services Bureau, and we thank them for their work, especially, uh, to keep the community drug-free and to get people who have been displaced with the resources and in the homes that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business, starting my far right.
None for me, Your Honor.
Uh, none, Your Honor.
None.
None?
None.
I have one, um, for the Personnel Director. I, I wouldn't want anyone to miss this, um, our, our monthly conversation. Um, last month, we talked about the fact that there were about 60 or 60 to 70, uh, folks that you were expecting to participate in our upcoming sexual harassment training, and my understanding is that it's coming up next week and the week after, January 18th, uh, maybe two weeks. January 18th and 24th are the two sessions, and my question tonight is just, was that able to accommodate everyone? You know, was everyone able to sign up for those sessions, or are we going to need a third session to get that group trained?
We had a session, I think, about six months ago, and I think between the two sessions and the next few weeks, we'll be able to handle everybody. If not, we can certainly do more training.
Okay. I was just wondering if, it, last time we talked, you had just set up the training dates, like literally the day before, so we didn't know whether that was true, so, thank you.
Okay.
New business, starting my far right.
None.
None, Your Honor.
None.
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 Chair has none. Resignations.
There are two resignations. The first is from Carmen Morton from the Pine Lake Study Committee, and the second is from Jeffrey Marrow from the Board of Ethics.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments. Board of Ethics to appoint Dave Roach to replace Jeff Marrow. Resignation, unexpired term to 317. Councilmember Brown, appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Your Honor, just, uh, just for the council's edification, I, I'm sure most of you have gotten to know Dave Roach at this point, but, um, Dave's been a, a longtime member of the Bristol community, uh, believes very strongly in community service, uh, has a long history of service, uh, in his union and with his fellow sheet metal workers and around the city of Bristol, and I think his attitude and his commitment to public service will be, um, uh, the exact, uh, addition in keeping with the spirit of the Board of Ethics that we're looking for. So I appreciate the council's support on his appointment tonight.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. To reappoint Sarah Minifico, three-year term to 120. Fire, Fire Board, sorry. Fire Board. Motion made and second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Firefighters Benefit Fund to reappoint Dave Budkis, two-year term to 119.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Historic District Commission to reappoint Karen Stevens, five-year term to 122.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Inland Wetlands Commission, Mayor's appointment. To rescind the appointment of Jac, Zachary Fisk, made December 13th, 2016, and to appoint Michael Robertson to replace Tracy Pearl as alternate member, unexpired term to 919. Board of Library Directors. To, to, not yet, I got a good name. To appoint, Library Directors, to appoint Melinda Avicio. I know I said that wrong.
Melena Acevito.
All right, I was close. To replace, you want us to, is that there for me?
Francois Alshick?
Okay. Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 120. To reappoint Melinda Carpenter, three-year term to 120. To reappoint Andrea Kapczynski, three-year term to 120.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Planning Commission to appoint John Posey as regular member to replace Anthony Del, Del Rey. Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 720.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. To appoint David White as alternate member to replace John Posey, made regular member, unexpired term to 73118.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. School Readiness Council to appoint Amanda Sawyer, Parent and Child Center Representative, unexpired term to 8, 18.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Planning, Planning, uh, Bristol Transportation Commission to appoint David Padlo, Citizen at Large, three-year term to 120. To reappoint David Hartley, a senior represent, uh, Senior Citizen at Large, three-year term to 120.
So moved.
I, I think that was Donald Padlo.
David Padlo or Don?
Donald Padlo.
Don Padlo. What'd I say?
David.
Oh, David. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. To appoint Robert Flanagan to replace Alan Weiner, City Planner, unexpired term to 118.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That's all I have on that. Item number 11.
Authorization for Mayor Kenneth B. Cocain, or Acting Mayor, to sign any and all documents associated with amending contract 2C1683, renovations at Bristol Public Works Facility with S. Carpenter Construction for $32,318 and to refer to Corporation Council for review.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 12.
Approval of change order to save more heating and cooling for $15,692.29 for a Mitsubishi ductless split AC in room 120 at Hubble School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 13.
To consider purchase of a single-family house on 14 Muzzy Street, Bristol, in foreclosure at the public auction sale on January 21st, 2017.
I have a motion to read for that.
Go ahead.
I hereby move to authorize a superintendent of Parks and Recreation, or the Corporation Council, or Assistant Corporation Council to bid at the foreclosure auction, auction sale for property located at 14 Muzzy Street in Bristol, Connecticut, on January 21st, 2017. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding. I furthermore move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the Mayor, Acting Mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
After you. Uh, yeah, um, what's, do we have a plan at a foreclosure auction? Are we gonna give bidding instructions? How are we gonna proceed?
The one thing we didn't wanna do is include in here our, our top bid, because we don't wanna let anyone know what we're, we're going to.
I'm absolutely fine with that.
So we don't have the opening bid yet? That usually comes out the day or two before.
I thought it's, oh, I'm sorry.
The opening bid at the auction?
Right.
That won't come out until usually a day before, two days if we're fortunate. Um, the Park Board wants to buy it so that they can utilize it for parking. We didn't set any amounts yet. Uh, we didn't do a floor or ceiling, because, again, we don't know. This is a unique situation as well, because a property, this property's underwater, the debt is actually $177,000. Normally, this would not go to auction, but because there's a federal lien on here, it has to go to auction, so there is no equity. My thought is that the bank, uh, it's CHFA is the plaintiff, my thought is that the bank is probably going to have, uh, a lower bid than what they're owed, obviously, 'cause the market value is only 112,000. Maybe if they wanna get it off their hands, they'll accept something smaller, so that makes it even more difficult for us to really nail down an opening figure, or, again, how much they wanna spend or don't. I thought the Park Board could determine if they had a certain amount that they were allowed to spend. I don't know where it is in their budget.
My only suggestion was that we have a plan. Uh, yeah, I think, I wanna make sure we, the procedure was in place, and maybe you guys work out what the maximum would be before we go there, based on value and what the budget will allow. That's fine.
Ed is going to talk to the Park Board next week and see if they have any ideas about numbers, and then one of our... One of the attorneys from our office will be going.
I was going to say, that's my next question. We're going to have our staff come.
Absolutely.
Yeah.